I pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the open meeting and we'll do a roll when they're going to swear in our council president. So can we do a roll call, please?
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Hooprich?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Rash?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Vincenzo?
Here.
Thank you. Now, our law director?
Yes, I need to swear in both Jim and Dawn because he's starting a new term on his own.
Mr. Vincenzo, once again, you're in the limelight, sir.
I did.
Thank you. You didn't hear me before, Tommy.
You didn't hear me before.
Okay. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
Hi.
I didn't say this.
Do some will swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do some will swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will uphold the Charter.
That I will uphold the Charter.
And all the laws of the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio.
And all the laws of the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office of councilperson.
The duties of the office of councilperson.
For the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio.
For the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Gladly hand a gavel to the President of the Council.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. And I'd like to leave you to start another term in office at this point in time. The first thing on the agenda is the minutes from the January 3 meeting. Is there anyone who did not?
I have a motion on those.
Okay, is there anyone who did not receive their minutes? Anyone who has a question on the minutes?
Well, I have a motion on the minutes to amend. The council, if you take a look at the roll call for the minutes approving the December meeting. I see it now, my fault.
Okay, at this time, since everyone's received their copy of the minutes from the January 3 meeting, and no one has any questions, I will entertain a motion to pass these minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Thomas, need a second?
Second.
Linda, need a roll call vote?
Butler? Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Hooprich?
Yes.
Rash?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
Motion carried, the minutes from the January 3 are now official. Okay, the next item on the agenda was a citizens' hearing. Mr. Michael Shaheen had a question regarding annexations of pieces of property that were discussed last year. He had some questions on it, but that was discussed with our law director.
That was taken care of last week.
Yes, he did tell me that if everything was understood and satisfactory, he would not need to be here. So I do not see him here, so I'm assuming that everything is satisfactory. Okay, we'll move on to the reports. First one is Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. And a snowy, pleasant below to everyone. As we begin the second half of January, I hope everyone had a safe and restful holiday weekend. We, of course, honor Dr. King on Monday and his work for civil rights. The long weekend also coincided with the first snowstorm of the season, packing about nine to 10 inches of heavy snow and ice. And our crews are to be commended. They worked all night on Sunday night to keep our roads clear. And thank you, Dawn, Darren, and your crews for the hard work keeping our streets safe. Actually, we hit a couple of phone calls today from people commending how well you did getting the roads clear. I appreciate that. But again, ask you all to continue exercising caution. It's a lot of snow to have moved, and roads aren't as wide as they usually are. So there's ice under there, too. And I can tell you from firsthand experience, no SUV does well on ice. So please stay in if you don't have to go down. And give us time to get the secondary streets and alleys cleaned off. I'd like to thank very much Lieutenant TJ Stewart and Councilwoman Tara Butler. There was a nice article in the paper today in The Times Leader. They opened the Newstown Diner for our road crews, for the police, for the deputies. Thank you, Robert, nice article about that. And on Sunday night, they were open until midnight, serving hot coffee, donuts, and hot dogs for the crews. And actions like this truly make our town a community. I'd like to thank Officers Yates and Klotz for their actions in delivering a baby last week. I bet that wasn't in your training when you went to police academy, was it? Their cool heads and actions helped deliver a healthy baby to a young mom, I think at one of the local hotels. And I know last year we were so worried about census, but this is a ridiculous way to get an increase in population. So we also met with our nurse provider, Betty Jo Skrull, who's been administering COVID tests. COVID tests are hard to get right now, and like everything else, they're backward. We've got 100 ordered, but they're probably going to be at least another week. And unfortunately, I can tell you that she was here today, and we had three more positive for COVID. So we are not done with this. Please continue to exercise caution, maintain social distance. I met with Jeremy to discuss the insurance bids which have come in, who have information about that. We also met regarding police interviews that were conducted. I met with Officer Clark regarding food distribution of extra foods which have come into the food pantry. Met with Elizabeth Glick, our law director, regarding various concerns. And met with Mr. Murphy and Chief Arbens regarding some mayor's court cases we've got coming up. I also attended a virtual workshop regarding human trafficking put on by the Attorney General's office. It was a very chilling and disturbing day of workshops and speakers. It's a very big problem, and I didn't realize till I talked to the chief, our area has a big problem because of the oil and gas activity, as well as our proximity to the interstate highway system. I also had a long discussion with Officer Way, and we were talking about this, and he confirmed, yes, so. And they have. He was kind of giving me some ways they know to recognize what they think is trafficking when they make a stop. It's an ugly reality that touches even our small town, but I'm glad to know our police force is trained to identify and respond to this horrid problem. It's also the week, the month of National School Choice Week. It's a blessing in our country that we're able to choose an education system for our kids, whether it be public school, private religious schools, homeschooling, or private academies. It is important for parents to be allowed to make that choice for their children and select that which best suits their child. As a product of 12 years of parochial school, I am very grateful for the foundation and the learning which I received and the constant push to excel from the nuns who nurtured me in the early years. And with that, I would like to read the proclamation that the City of St. Clairsville has. Whereas all children in the City of St. Clairsville should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the City of St. Clairsville recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the City of St. Clairsville to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the City of St. Clairsville, and whereas St. Clairsville is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. Whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but it also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas the City of St. Clairsville has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas National School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, I, Catherine Tallman, Mayor of St. Clairsville, hereby recognize January 23 through the 29th as the City of St. Clairsville School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Thank you very much. And that's it, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Does anyone have any questions for the mayor?
I just have something to add regarding the COVID test. I was on my email today and internet, and something popped up about getting the free test kits from the government. You get four of them. So I figured I'd try it out, and I clicked on the link, and it really just, I thought, here we go. It's going to be like an hour, but it was like 30 seconds. They want your name, address, and that's it. And I printed that out, then I got an email saying that it's being shipped. So if anybody wants to see this, they're going to, they're going to even ask me how many you want, but they're going to send you four.
Will you let me know how, and maybe talk to Betty Jo, how that is administered, how easy it is? Because I will go on that website and get some, and I figured it would be forever.
The website is covidtest, and that's T-E-S-T with an S, covidtest.gov. And I'll pass this around, it's really, I mean, it's your name and address, and that's it.
Thank you. That's good to know. And I urge everyone to make yourself, to avail yourself of this, because again, it's rearing its head hard again in our city and in our employees.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for the mayor? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the service directors' report. Mr. Greenler?
Evening, council. Been a busy couple of weeks, as always. I want to, first of all, congratulate the new council members. I apologize that I wasn't at the last meeting. I went home and had a little bit of pneumonia, so kind of was an issue getting out in the cold. Also wanted to point out what Jim was mentioning before. He emailed all of you guys, but there's a, we got an email today for some free, I'll call it "education" for elected officials, if anybody's interested in that. It looks like there's some interesting classes there. There's two-day workshops, and then, what's it say? Two full-day in-person workshops on March 4th and April 23rd, and four online half-day workshops, March 9th, 23rd, April 6th, and April 20th. I do believe these were all put in your box, so you have that.
I didn't even put those in everybody's box. So there is copy of this, and some of them are online, some of them are in-person classes.
I wanted to also address the public records request that was addressed at the last meeting. I apologize for the delay in that. I'm actually working on the process of tracking and handling of public records, so that we're not allowing things like that to happen again. But also wanted to put it on the record that I was the one that authorized the invoice. It was me alone, and the reason for it was because of the request itself. It was the discipline-only portion of an employee's personnel file that was not up for any council vote or action. So that's what the decision was made for that in going through it. That employee, he was up for a promotion recently, but before that, there's no other action that needed to be taken by council. All promotions and raises and firing were done, executive, administrative, and not dealt with by legislation. So I was the one that was alone that made for the request based off, by the nature of the request, what was there. So I just wanted that to be in the record. Meetings, there were six different meetings since this one last meeting. There were also six meetings, various meetings with everything in there. Completed in projects, insurance bids were received. We received four bids. The low bid was $74,824 and a high bid of $123,347. If anyone would like to sit down and look at the bids, please come down. We'll set up a time. These are all the bids that were received, and all the information. Instead of wasting paper and sending it to all you guys, we'll go through it. The substation contracts are in and being signed. We also relocated the generator at the East End lift station and did the forced main repair. Upcoming projects, going to try and start up the safety meetings. We've got one scheduled, it's the 20th, isn't it? The 20th of this year, or this month. Also going to have an HR meeting to discuss who our HR company will be.
It's 27.
Yep. We've got department budgets, meetings going on with that. Some sewer lift station work. We still got our servers that we need to get upgraded here at the city building. Some sexual harassment training needs to go through, updating our building standards, standard detailed streets for sidewalks and everything. The East End water connection, still waiting on that concrete vault in the booster station. We're hoping that it's going to be any day now, but going to also have a meeting with the engineer on Friday to discuss and go from there, see what happens. The National Road Bikeway Trail Tunnel project is going to, we're waiting on the engineers to get us the cost estimates for that and the estimates for their fees. The permanent waterline break under the interstate, we're collaborating with the engineer and the EPA on funding sources for that. We've got a meeting this Friday with them on to try and determine what action we need to do with that. Let's see here. A couple of properties that we're still looking at, still working on getting prices for them. Updating the administrative policies and procedures that goes with the HR meeting. And then the K-9 dog wash station has been ordered, right, Chief?
Right.
Departments, electric department, been doing maintenance, just upkeep, some stuff here at the city building. They've also been out helping plow streets. Water, wastewater, the waterline projects, winter maintenance. We've had four waterline breaks to date. The East End generator for the forced main was moved, as I mentioned before, so that it'll allow for the forced main repairs. Still have the East End water connection, as mentioned, and then the Efallis Station is constantly having issues with stuff. Street department, only thing I can say there is snow. Want to send out a reminder that there's no parking on streets during snow emergencies. And also wanted to please ask that residents and people do not plow or shovel their sidewalks or driveways into the street. It creates another safety hazard. I know it's a lot of snow, but we got to get rid of it somewhere, and we can't put it in the streets. We're still doing the Christmas tree pickup. We'll go through that if need be and go from there. Rec Center, they've got registration open for an indoor soccer program for grades K through 6. An indoor volleyball program for girls, grades 3 through 6 is opening this week also. Got Wheeling Clayworks classes starting January 18th for students and January 19th for adults. Pickleball's still going on. They still have a fitness group going on there. And they're also looking for new sponsors for the summer concert series with the bands. So if anyone is interested in that, or there's a business interested, please let us know. They have also gotten their new floor machine and are being used on the floor. Police, we hired a full-time officer. We also had our interviews last week. We've had the resignation of an officer from a full-time position to a part-time position. The radar sign is out and being moved around the city. Do we, do you have any stats on that yet, Chief?
It's on, no.
Okay. No, I meant actual speeding, anything like that.
I can, I can.
We'll get those, don't worry about it. All right. Good to the city, we've got three out sick with COVID, one out sick, but we don't think it's COVID. I do want to send thanks to all of our crews, the street crews, the electric and wastewater guys. They were all out dealing with the snow. As the mayor mentioned, we had two officers help deliver a baby. Congratulations to Officer Yates and Klotz. Want to welcome Officer Mike Wheeler. He started yesterday as a full-time employee in the police department. And then, since I wasn't here last time, Employee of the Month was a member of our street department. He's been employed with the city for 24 years. He's married with two children, his wife Terry, his Brandon. Brandon is his son, he's in the Air Force, and he has a son, Kenny. Works in the street department, but also has a wastewater license. He transferred departments a couple of years ago. But he's willing to work out in any department. A couple of weeks ago, he was pressed into duty to do lab work at the wastewater plant when our usual lab guy was out sick. He enjoys camping, fishing, kayaking, vegetable garden. So our Employee of the Month for this month is Brian Coleman. And then, last thing. Jumping around. The legislation items before us tonight are the legislation 2022-01, an interfund transfer, and we're asking for that to be an emergency. And that's it.
Does anyone have any questions for the Service Safety Director?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Again, also I'd like to thank, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to tell Jeremy I appreciate your explanation about the public records request.
Thank you.
And again, I want to thank Dawn, since we're going through that. I've been this down a long time, but as much as those we got down, as fast as these main roads and most of the side roads were cleared, these guys worked the bus off, so they did a heck of a job. So really appreciate that. And Officers Yates and Klotz, congratulations. Okay, I'll move on to Police Chief's report. Mr. Arbens, Chief Arbens.
Good evening, council. Jeremy had mentioned we do have a new full-time officer, Officer Wheeler. As you recall, earlier last year, it's the officer that we were asking for thoughts and prayers to be with. He was in the hospital in pretty serious shape from COVID and did a miraculous turnaround, is an amazement to his doctors. He was able to get a return-to-work slip, came back and took our physical agility course, and passed it with no problem. So we went ahead and finished our interview process, and he is the guy that's taking former Lieutenant Pulis's spot on our roster. So when you see him around town, right now he's on day turn, working with Officer Porter. Please go up and say hello to him. Now, on January 10th, a little after 1:00 a.m., Officers Klotz and Yates got a call asking if they could assist at the day's end. They were advised that a female at room 233 was screaming hysterically, possibly in labor, but they weren't sure. Officers Klotz and Yates responded and arrived on scene first. Once they were in the room, it was obvious the woman was in labor in an emergency situation. When their attempts to calm her down until the paramedics arrived were exhausted, they took action, got her in proper position, and verbally, physically, supported her and facilitated the birth of a baby girl. The paramedics arrived and then transported the newborn and her mother to the hospital. And that baby was later transferred to Morgantown Hospital, but is doing just fine. This is a very rare occasion for police, and one that brings a special pride for them, as usually when we save a life, it involves some sort of tragic circumstance. For their actions, I'm proud to present Officers Klotz and Yates with the lifesaving commendation pin. Good work, fellas.
That's it? Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the chief?
I can think of two people for the Employee of the Month award. It's a dual, dual award.
Okay.
I just want to make one comment. I'd asked Chief Arbens if they'd had training to do this in the academy, and he said, no, but between them, they've got five kids. I think they knew what to do, so thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on to Finance Director. Nettie, where is it?
I think my report's going to be boring, but we didn't deliver any babies. Just working on closing out 2021. December is actually balanced, but I'm just fine-tuning everything before I close out the computer system. And everything's going well in the Finance Department. The legislation that's here tonight, it's just standard every year that we do this, so it needs to be passed so we can do the transverse for the departments to be able to function. And that's all I have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the Finance Director?
And then, the public officers bond. Have the new council members been added?
We usually don't bond council members.
Interesting, okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Nettie. Okay, we'll move on to Planning and Zoning Administrator, Mr. Murphy.
Oh, thank you, Jim. I've been working on updating the zoning map. It's part of our GIS mapping system with the zoning amendments that were approved by council at the last meeting. Turned out to be a much larger project than I anticipated, but it's okay. At first, I thought I would only need to select that parcel that was to be changed and then make the change to the new zoning district. Instead, to not only make the change to that parcel, but also update the entire zoning classification layer that the parcel was located in, and then adjust some of the surrounding zoning districts that share the boundary with that district. So it's okay, I mean, it's not a problem. It just was a little bit more in-depth than I anticipated. Dustin helped me out, kind of showed me how to do that, and we were able to move forward with it. It has been finalized, and the updated zoning map is now on our website, so if you did want to check that out, it's certainly good. Out of that project, I've grown a larger, more long-term project. While completing that task, I noticed that our partial layer and zoning layers were not always consistent and lined up. It's a smart idea to get that cleaned up and lined up, so I'll work on that in the future when I do have time. What will result is a much cleaner and easier-to-use zoning map. So that'll be a longer-term project, but a good one. I had a few phone meetings and Teams meetings last week with some engineers and architects regarding the former NAPA site. They are reviewing the zoning requirements for that site, and have had questions about the utilities that are on that site. They are not willing to divulge any specifics or propose use of the project at this time. I did check out the county website, and it has not shown any change in ownership to the property. So again, something may be happening, something may not be happening. That property is owned commercial. I met with the developer, and stated they were in the process of purchasing what is known as the Carson Property along Martin Road. This property is owned low-density residential. They discussed their preliminary idea to construct some type of residential development on that property. This discussion is very preliminary. There are some utility concerns that must be resolved, and again, that I haven't seen a transfer yet on the county's website for that property. So that's what I have for council. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Murphy? Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll move on to council committees. First off, Finance, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, Finance Committee met tonight for this meeting. Couple of things, Jeremy had mentioned we have ordinance 2022-1 to pass tonight. It's the only ordinance. It's more of a housekeeping item to move money around, and we need to pass that tonight if we can. The other thing is we still haven't received the $5 million yet from the state, but I guess that money's coming, which is a good thing. We're not going to take that back. And last, we discussed, as Jeremy mentioned, insurance liability. We have the bids in for that. And we have a bid that's going to save us probably $40?
Almost $40, $39,000.
$39,000. And we discussed it at length. It seems like a good deal. If any council members want to talk to Jeremy about it. But basically, what we're doing is, as a city, we're going in with other cities across the state and townships and other government entities, and there's about 571. We kind of pull our resources to get a better rate. So we'll have another emergency ordinance at the next meeting. And again, if anybody wants to talk to Jeremy about the bids, he has all the paperwork. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone have any questions for Mike? Okay, we'll move on to Utilities. Ms. Butler.
No report for Utilities. Next meeting is February 7th at 6:45.
Okay, thank you. Move on to Police Committee. Beth, Opreach.
Oh, we have a Police Committee meeting after tonight's council meeting.
Okay, we'll move on to Streets North Side.
No report for Streets North Side.
Okay, thank you. Streets South Side, Mr. Thresh.
No report.
Safety Committee, Mr. Thresh.
We have a meeting January 20th at 9:00 a.m.
J.C., is that it, the Rec Center?
No, that's probably down the street.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, Building and Grounds, Mr. Jordan.
No report.
Planning Commission, Mr. Thomas.
Nothing scheduled, no report.
Fire District, listen.
Yes, at the recommendation of the Chief, the board approved the permanent, sorry, the board approved the fire and emergency contract between Campbell and Trail Fire District Number Four and Wheeling Township trustees as presented, and also approved the hire of two new part-time employees. Other issues discussed were the department was awarded a thousand-dollar Walmart community grant. Structural firefighting gear and SCBA's were put out to bid, and those will be paid for with a $368,000 federal grant. We also received the annual report and discussed exploring options for an architect, engineer to prepare plans for upgrades and renovations to the station. The next meeting is February 16th at 3:00 p.m. at the Education Center.
3:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody have any questions for Linda, Beth?
Linda, who negotiated the contract? You would have to talk to Chief. Could you find that out? You can call Chief. I'm the director, it's Chief Hall. Appreciate that.
Any other questions for Linda on Fire District? Okay, Recreation, Mr. Thomas.
Meeting this coming Thursday, January 20th at 4:30 p.m. at the Rec Center.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Thomas? Okay, move on to Park District. Linda, do you have any?
No report for that. The next meeting will be February 14th. I need that call preferred.
I'm sorry?
Call preferred.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Linda on Park District? Okay, that concludes the council committees for this evening. We'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Law Director, Mr. Smith.
There's only one piece of legislation before council tonight, and that is ordinance 2022 dash one. That's the ordinance to make the inter-fund transfer and reallocations within the funds for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency. And there is a request by the Finance Director to make this emergency legislation so the proper funds can get funded and government can keep on proceeding. Yes, governing.
All right, we'll have the first reading on the ordinance 2022 dash one.
Ordinance number 2022 dash one, in ordinance to make inter-fund transfers and relocate, reallocations within the funds for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, there is a request to have this considered emergency legislation. Would anyone like to take any further action, make a motion? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Ms. Butler? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote on considering this emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Opreach?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is seven in favor, not opposed to consider this emergency legislation. We will now read the ordinance again and take a vote on the versions, or on the ordinance itself.
Ordinance number 2022 dash one, in ordinance to make inter-fund transfers and reallocations within the funds for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we have a motion to consider this, vote on this ordinance. Ms. Butler? You need a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Vincenzo will now take a roll call vote on passage of the ordinance.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Opreach?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, 2022 dash one has been tened unanimously, and they take effect immediately. That is everything on the agenda for this evening, for the regular meeting. Beth, I do believe you have a Police Committee meeting directly following?
Yes.
Yes.
That Police Committee meeting will follow this council meeting directly here in the council chamber. Anybody have any? Mike?
Yeah, I forgot, we talked about meeting at 7:00 o'clock versus meeting at 7:30, and council is unanimous with that. We just need to figure out a start time, maybe sometime in March or April, to give the public notice.
Okay, do we really need to have a vote actually to do that? I would say, no one has a problem with it. And the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the charter only specifically states that they will meet two nights a month. It doesn't say what date or what time, that's up to council. So we don't need anything through the charter, just a vote by council to change it, and then it'll be put on the city's webpage, so then it becomes the normal start time for that council meeting. And I would say we need to give the public at least a month, two meetings.
My suggestion would be March 1st. I think it should be done by resolution at the very least, but I'll defer to the Law Director. It needs to be of record, I think, more than just a motion, but March 1st gives you a month, and it also gives committee people and staff the ability to get together and determine the adjustments that they need to make with committee meetings, which can easily be done. It's a change, but I think, in my opinion, you're gonna, you may attract some more of the public, which, if you, you start those meetings a little bit earlier.
I agree, and we definitely want to give the public enough time to know that the meeting is gonna start early, so the people that were come at 7:30 coming, the meeting's already half over.
Yeah, so I don't know, I would, I would ask the Law Director just to have something ready for a March 1st date, if council's fine with that.
Okay, we have a resolution.
Resolution for next meeting.
Well, I, look, I, I'm not opposed to earlier than that, but we talked independently, I, I'm fine with 6:30 too.
Seven is better, I mean, I, I like seven, but I go with maturity, you know, I mean, it's at 6:30.
Seven is better for me, with being on two different committees prior to council meetings, because we're already gonna have to back that up. If we would move it back to 6:30, we'd have to move those meetings back to just after 5:00 o'clock.
Yeah, we've already got council, committee meetings.
And you're talking utility and finance, which both of them, yeah.
I don't think we really want to go earlier, I don't think we want to go earlier than seven.
It really wouldn't work.
We could always change it again, and have, move it earlier and have all the other meetings after, but just to keep it, I mean, we already talked about seven, I guess.
What's other people think? J.C.?
Seven.
Seven o'clock is fine, we discussed it one by one. We decided on 7:00 o'clock, you can always see how that plays out. There's nothing to preclude having committee meetings on other days, I understand, having them on council days, but we can work around that in the future, but I think the half-hour start is fine.
I agree with that myself personally. So I would, I would suggest, we would prepare it, have the resolution, be voted on first meeting. You can vote on it in February, the second meeting in February to start the first meeting in March.
Do you want it emergency, so?
Well, yeah.
That way, it's, it's in an effect, so when March comes.
It can be multiple, but it'll take effect without 30-day wait.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
Everybody's pretty much content with 7:00 then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I guess we're doing seven. Any other questions? Mark?
The Charter. This Charter needs changed. And I, I recognize what it says as far as the five years of the Charter Review Commission. I have a question, then I have a comment. Does, does anybody have record of the votes over the last however many years, and, and what was voted on and passed by the electors to be included in the Charter? Is that, okay, that what I'm?
I would say Roberta probably is.
Yeah, because we've looked at several of them, so I would say probably yes, but there's probably nothing.
I contacted the Board of Elections, and just, I just want everybody to know, this, when I look through this, there are many of these changes go back to the 90s, when I was on this council and served as Law Director. And that's, that's a long time, 30 years. It's, there's numerous changes, as you all know, that need to be made to it, just from little stuff that drives me crazy, that the Finance Director is, is referred to as a he throughout the entire thing. That's, that's the menial stuff that bothers me, as opposed to things that would make this city be more efficient in its operation across the board. So I contacted the Board of Elections, and I asked them to go back to 2000 to start. I have all the ballots of what was voted on, per the Charter Review Commission's recommendation, that actually made it to the ballot. So they're now working on what was voted yes versus what was voted no. And I'm gonna gather that information and, and ensure that those changes were made. I can get with Roberta, et cetera. Elizabeth, at some point, I want to talk to you about how we can possibly change this, the Charter, without having to wait three more years or whenever the Charter Review Commission, there's got to be a way to, to change this to where, I mean, honestly, I don't want to take up too much time tonight, just want to make everybody aware of what's going on. The five years between meetings is way too long.
I agree.
And it needs to be no more than two years, in my opinion. But you can all think about it, because obviously it's gonna be your vote. It needs to be two, how much change is in five years? Some of the changes in here haven't been made for 30 years. So we gotta, there, there has to be a way that we could get this changed sooner than later. I'm gonna work on it, I'll talk to you about some of my feelings on what we could do, and we'll go from there. So I just wanted to bring that up. We've gotta be, we're better than this.
We have pointed out to us by our HR company that there are lots of.
Okay, we're, we're better than this, and I'm happy to work on this, I'm happy to have anybody that wants to work on it with me. I know Councilman Smith and I have talked about it a number of times, and I'll just keep you posted, if that's okay. I'm happy to take it on.
Thank you.
I personally, I'm not an attorney, so I can't speak as an attorney, but to me, there's a lot of very, very vague things in the Charter that could be left to interpretation, and that needs to be black and white, so it's either this way or that way.
And Elizabeth, I have other charters of cities, some of my friends and colleagues that serve a charter city in Ohio.
Not state other charters also.
And we, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just have to tailor it to St. Clairsville, and what makes St. Clairsville run more efficiently than we're already running.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, no more questions or comments, we'll entertain the motion to adjourn. So, a second, Mr. Smith? His meeting's adjourned, Police Committee will start here.